Good evening. The town of East Fishkill Planning Board will come to order, have a roll call, and this will be by name. Jason?
Here.
Michael O'Brien?
Here.
Lori G.
Present.
Richard Campbell?
Here.
John Eichman?
Here.
Ed Miyoshi?
Here.
And Craig Smith here. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Justice for all.
Good evening, and we welcome you to the planning board session. As COVID-19 has interrupted our way we normally run our planning board sessions, but we're delighted that we can do this via Zoom to keep some of our key businesses moving forward. And so with that, our upcoming meeting dates are May 19th and June 9th. We have minutes for approval, but from February 18th, I'm going to put those on hold. So we're going to get started right into first, we have three businesses coming forward tonight for discussion, and we'll start off with Global Foundries.
So I would ask that anybody from Global Foundries, please raise your hand. There should be an option at the bottom of your screen to do so, and then I'll invite you to become a panelist. And if you're calling from a phone, if you hit *69, it should raise your hand if this is your matter.
Can you hear me, Michael?
I can hear you.
Mick O'Callahan, can you hear me?
I am muted. I am muted him just now.
Okay. You probably need Robert Newhard and Mick O'Callahan both unmuted.
They're both unmuted.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you, Mick.
Great, thank you.
So I'll just kick it off by saying that Robert Newhard and Mick O'Callahan, Michael O'Callahan, representing Global Foundries, and we are glad that the planning board was able to do this and find everybody in good health here, so glad for that. We'd like to proceed with the next step there for the site plan approval for the building 320B post-fab infrastructure upgrade for Global Foundries, which will is being set up to accommodate the future on semiconductor post-fab operations that will be operated at the East Fishkill facility. So Mick O'Callahan is the project manager for the building 320B upgrade, and he will take us through the updates, and he has a presentation that he will give relative to 320B. I should point out this morning Scott Bryant was good enough to work with his team there and make arrangements for us to converse with and dialogue with his building code consultant, Martin Rogers from town of Cortland, and we went over some of the building code compliance parameters and the variance that we will need, the process for the variance that we will need there for the exhaust system penetrating a two-hour firewall system. So with that, I will hand it over to Mick, and he can take you through the presentation that he's got prepared. It is an update to what you saw back in February.
So I saw it flash on the screen earlier in the meeting. Do you want me to share, or is that somebody else have got that presentation?
I have.
So, Michael, what do you want Mick to go in presentation mode, or does Michelle want to present it?
Michelle will put it on the screen, and then Mick can start presenting based on what Michelle posts.
Great, thank you. Okay. So this is a quick update on further to our previous presentation on February 18th. So basically, if you want to go to the next slide, Michelle. So we showed this during our last presentation. This is just a reminder. So basically, the 320B building is north of center there on the Global Foundries site. You can see Route 52 on the north, I Park Boulevard on the east side, you've got the I-84 on the south, just in case anybody's made out of the location of the building. Next slide. Similar layout, so we can skip this one, Michelle. Okay, so basically, the shaded pink area is the building itself. It's flanked by Building 310 on the east side and Building 321 on the west side. We also are in the process of converting the old 322 building to the southwest corner of the subject building into a parking lot. And that's just kind of a localized layout plan. Next slide. So we showed this the last time as well. So just as a reminder, basically, the shaded pink area is the new addition. Basically, the overall height is just above 50 feet, about 50 foot 8 inches, and the new proposed addition is 10 feet above the existing carpet level. It projects out across the front of the building by a little bit, about eight feet. You can see those columns drop to the ground level just in the front of the south elevation of the building. Any questions on this one? Okay, good. So since our last meeting, we have progressed with our 3D model of the 320B building. And I just wanted to give a perspective of what that looks like relative to the previous drawing that we showed. It's pretty similar there, as you can see. What you don't see on the other drawing is basically the building is flanked by multiple utility trestles, those gray elongated rectangles there that you see up on posts. They carry the site utilities to and from the various buildings. So you can see that the addition is actually in behind those trestles. But that kind of gives you a BIM model review or view of the south elevation of the structure. Next slide. So again, this is another shot, 3D model view from the southeast corner. Again, you can see kind of the perspective of the building there and what the addition is going to look like. So again, you can see that the, you know, it projects slightly above the existing roof by that 10 feet that I spoke of, and that kind of gives you an idea of conceptually what the building is going to look like.
Nick, I'm sorry, how do we ask questions during this? Is there like a hand raise or something like that that we can do? Well, anyway, the question is, what's in that space now where those tracks will go? Is that vacant land?
Where are you speaking of, Michael? Which part?
I'm asking about the new tracks that are coming out. What is, what's there now?
So basically, we have, we are not demoing anything along the south elevation of the building in order to accommodate the structure. So basically, those posts that drop down from the new penthouse, they will be nestled in amongst existing utilities. There are below-ground utilities for sure in the footprint of the building. So basically, we are going to install this new penthouse in vacants, you know, it is vacant pretty much from a construction perspective.
Okay, thank you.
But Michael's asking, though, what are these gray tracks that come out beyond the actual building?
Oh, gotcha, okay. So they are utility trestles. So basically, what they carry, they carry all of our utilities to this building. So what we have is we have central utility buildings, you know, for large DI water supply. We don't make the likes of deionized water in this building itself. We take it from our central utilities building.
I think the question is, are these new, is this new construction, or this is previously existing?
This is all existing. So basically, that new addition that you see there, that kind of a hatched appearance, that is the only new part of the structure. Everything else is existing.
So the gray, the gray tracks already exist, all these existing feeds.
Exactly, yes.
But I'm sorry, Mick, today, aren't they pretty much just exposed pipe?
Yes, they are.
Okay, so now they're going to be enclosed?
No, they're not, and that is a little bit misleading. So basically, when we model something, four utility runs that are existing, and if they're grouped together, they're kind of shown as a box. So my apologies on that, that is a little bit misleading, but they are, they're open structures with utilities sitting on them effectively.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
Yeah, so Michael, all the existing utilities, they're going to remain. There's going to be no changes to that, like Mick said. There is the DI water, the DI water return, the high temp hot water for heating, the chilled water for air conditioning, and they all have a return. The electrical feeds for the buildings are carried on there, the domestic water, every commodity that we use is either on that trestle or under the ground, most of them being on the trestle.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions on this one? Okay. So this view here, it takes a slice off the top of the roof of the new addition, the new penthouse addition. So you can see there, basically, we are populating this with new utilities in order to support the new cleanroom area below. So you can see this is pretty well populated right now. You know, you've got different shades of color in here. They kind of represent different types of equipment. So, you know, we've got scrubbed exhaust systems over there to the right-hand side of the picture. You know, we've got new re-sarc air units. So basically, because it's cleanroom, we're going to supply cleaner air to the clean air to the area below. And we also, as I mentioned before, DI water, so we've got a new DI water skid. So what that is, the DI water comes in on the trestle that we spoke of, and it gets an additional polish in this area. So we need an area for a skid for that purpose. And we also have some other, you know, bits and pieces of utilities in here, like, you know, booster pumps and a few things like that. So you can see this is pretty well populated, and this is all to support the new cleanroom area below. That kind of a solid L-shaped yellow area that you see, that's a move-in path. So basically, you can kind of see an overhead door to the left-hand side of the picture, southwest corner, we'll say. That's where we would move these utilities into the building. And that yellow band allows us to move equipment to and fro in this space and install it effectively. So that kind of gives you an idea of the purpose of this addition and what is going to house. Any questions on that? Okay. So that kind of gives you a segue into the overall view of the, of Level 2 of both the new penthouse and the existing penthouses on the building. So basically, again, that box you see on the kind of southwest corner of the page, with all the colors in it, that's the area that we looked at previously with the roof taken off of. But west of that, again, I think we spoke about this in the last meeting, so that's actually vacant space that we're not touching. So that big gray mass on the left-hand side of the sheet, that's existing vacant space that we're really not doing an awful lot with, and we probably will cut through it with a corridor to link the two buildings. But other than that, there's nothing really going on on that side of the building. And what we do have is on the extreme left-hand side of the page, you can see there are two boxes, and what they are is outdoor switchgear, sorry, outdoor generators. One of them is going to be installed now, the other one is a future. So basically, that's the only other scope that we're going to install on the outside of the building. Going back to the inside of the building, again, as I say, you know, this kind of shows it, and it's work in progress, we're populating this model with all of the existing utilities throughout the building. You know, it's quite an old building, we don't have a lot of good records, so we're utilizing this model in order to build our records of the entire building and utilities therein. So that's pretty much a view of what the overall Level 2 layout looks like. So this is Level 1 down below, okay? So basically, the lighter areas are, so you can see on the kind of left of center on the bottom of the page there, that's the new cleanroom that we're converting current vacant space. So the new addition, the penthouse, this is what sits below. So that's the space there that's going to become new cleanroom, and that's the area that we're trying to support with this new addition. So there are a bunch of new tools, it's going to be full of tools. You can kind of see little footprints of various boxes and lines in there. They're all the new tools that are going in that space. There are some other light shaded areas, they're just alterations of existing cleanroom that we're doing a little bit of work in. But, you know, for this purpose, we're focusing on that vacant space, which sits below the new addition on the Level 2. And that's pretty much it for the information that we have right now. I know there were some requests for other information. We're working on an IBM Groundwater Soil Investigation Report, and we're also working on a perimeter security plan with some upgrades for gate modifications, guardhouse, et cetera, and also an upgraded parking lot plan with drainage calculations. I know that's been requested as well by Scott and Michelle there. So we plan on having all of that information over to the authority by May 1st. We'll also have, after the really good meeting we had today with Scott there and Martin Rogers, you know, we will have the modified code study back to, back for review within a week. So we're making good progress on that front.
Yep. The other thing, Mick, you might want to mention too, is that Jacobs, you submitted their trip generation report that Michelle had requested, and the, Michelle, I'm not sure if you had a chance to look at that and see if you had any questions at this point.
I did look at it. Let me read the results to the planning board. So essentially, there were 72 AM trips and 63 PM trips coming from the proposed use. The AM hour, peak hours, 5:30 to 6:30, so that will probably largely be off any of the other peak around at the same time. But the PM peak would probably coincide with the Route 52 PM peak, because it's between 5:30 and 6:30.
The other couple comments that I'll make before there's any additional questions that you might want to ask, is that the parking lot that Mick referred to, that will be in that, I'll call it the courtyard between Building 323, 322, where the building was demolished, and we'll be putting a new parking lot over top of it, and 320B, the subject building, that parking lot will, we've already got approval to do the one section, and then we've got to go back to Scott and Michelle in advance of review of the IBM Groundwater Report to get your permission to go forward with the balance of that parking lot construction that would go over the existing foundation for Building 322, which will provide the additional parking that's required for Global Foundries with the additional folks in 320B plus the other existing buildings.
So do you have new employees coming in, not just to the new construction then, but to other buildings as well? That's what it sounded like you said?
No, the reason I phrased it that way is that right now, the existing Global Foundries employees have permission, and we're paying rent to I Park to park on their parking lot to the south and to the north of that building. There's roughly 100 new employees that would be employed in this particular building once the project is 100% complete.
So, Michelle, I mean, the trip gen didn't sound hugely impactful to me. Is there any concern there?
No, it's just that we've been asked by DOT to start tracking the number of trips that are created by the uses in the 52 corridor and on the I Park parcel.
It just seems like this particular one doesn't sound like a huge impact.
No, there's about 100 employees that are on shift. So I think the largest number of trips would be created actually in the PM peak, and that would be 63 probably, because there's only 50 on each shift, but you have some overlap with people going back, you know, exchanging when they're changing shifts.
Okay.
The exemption for the fire thing, can you tell us a little more about that with how that's going to proceed?
I think you're referring to the variance that I talked about in the beginning.
I said exemption, I meant variance.
Yes, we discussed that with Scott and with Martin Rogers this morning, and there is an exhaust system that would handle the exhaust for, the building is broken up into two parts, the north half and the south half. There's a two-hour firewall that goes down the middle. So there's a, we'd have to proceed with and variance with the Department of State to say that it's okay to penetrate that firewall with an exhaust system.
Okay, so it goes straight to the Department of State for New York State? There's no intervening reviews or anything like that? It just goes?
Well, yeah, Scott will review it, and he will make his recommendation, I believe Scott, with input there from Martin Rogers, once the variance request is professionally prepared. Is that correct, Scott?
Yeah, pretty much sounds good, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
We have Jacobs Engineering preparing that right now, that submission.
So is there anything that you're waiting on that in any way is construction being gated?
So at the last meeting, you know, you kindly gave us permission to proceed with the demolition and the foundations, you know, for the structure. So that keeps us moving, you know, so we have, you know, we're not impacted yet by any decision by the planning board, so thank you for that help there. So we're still moving along.
And how much of that has been completed? What percentage do you feel has been completed from then till now?
So we've been pretty much in the planning stage. So basically, we've been going out to bid with our contractors for the work. There are a few constraints that we have. So basically, you know, like a building, in a building of this nature, we have some abatement of, you know, asbestos, like, you know, in the old vinyl tiles and the floor, things like that. So we've got to remove all of that to facilitate the actual demolition of the structure. So basically, and the floors slab structure. So we're probably in the region of about two to three weeks away from actually demoing that slab, and we roll right into foundations straight after that.
And how long do you think your demolition will take once you start?
So let's say three weeks to start, and about maybe a week to two weeks then to complete that phase of construction. Then we roll straight into foundations. If we can proceed with the foundations, we maintain our current schedule.
Okay.
And I think if I remember correctly, you gave us your kindly permission to proceed with that demolition, and I believe the construction of the new floors slab.
Yes, the foundations, Bob, that was what was agreed.
What was the last part? I remember the demolition, what was the last part, Bob?
The concrete foundation.
I just recall demolition.
Yeah.
Same.
I don't know how we would have started with the foundations without having plans approved.
Maybe I misunderstood.
Maybe we misunderstood.
So if it's demolition, then it's just demolition then?
Yeah, and based off of the timeline that Mick just expressed, we should be right at the next meeting for moving forward for your foundation pour. So we will work closely with Scott and Michelle, and if we need to make the adjustment to our meeting schedule to align, we can make that a possible option.
Great, thank you for that offer.
And let me just ask, whether or not you get the variance successful has no bearing on the foundation, right?
That's correct.
Mick, you have, are these generators, there are two new generators, backup generators for this building?
That's correct. Well, we're installing one, the second one may be a future for some time in the future, you know, it could be two years, could be five years, you know, depending on, you know, if we decide to do something else with, say, for example, that west vacant space, you know, if we were ever decided to fit that area out, it would need its own backup generator. You know, it may well happen, you know, but all we're doing is planning for space right now. We're not actually going to install a second generator, we're just going to install one for this addition.
Have you already calculated what the net new electrical load into that building is going to be?
Yes, well, yes, we have. That generator is 2,000 kilowatt.
And I apologize if we asked this at the last meeting, did we talk about any hazardous substances or storage of any hazardous substances for the new building? Is there anything there we need to discuss?
We are working on that right now. So basically, you know, with the new toolset and basically the, you know, the new tools in the new showroom area, the vacant space. So basically, we will have the additional requirements for chem storage. So we currently have chem rooms in the building. We just need to look at some additional storage space for drums, et cetera. And, you know, we will be reviewing that with Scott and Michelle in the coming weeks, basically, as we develop those plans. In fact, I think we tentatively scheduled a meeting for May 5th with Scott there and Martin Rogers, just to review where we're at and the progress prints for chem storage.
Mick, I'll just make one slight comment to what you just said. I would categorize those spaces there where the chem will be as a staging area. We have our own existing, which you're familiar with, chemical storage building there that's set up specifically for the longer-term storage there of the chemicals and chemical waste that's building 304 and building 309. So the chemical storage area that Mick referred to would be just really like a one or two-day staging area for the chemicals.
Okay. Scott, does that require then, or Michelle, any additional permitting or anything as part of our process?
I don't know. We can answer that. I'm not aware of any, Lori, but I will look into it.
Okay, thank you.
And Mick, from the operation of the cleanroom, the exhaust from the building, is there anything from an emissions perspective that we should be concerned about?
So we're working through that, and the purpose of this addition is for the abatement of that exhaust. So basically, and it's really, really strict, so the actual performance of these scrubbers, it's 99% removal of any sort of HPM in the exhaust system. So it's extremely strict, and it's a permitted unit. So that is one of the main purposes for this addition, because they're quite tall, and we are going to install two of these abatement units. So it's extremely strict and it's a permitted unit. So that is one of the main purposes for this addition because they're quite tall and we are going to install two of these abatement units and with, with space for one in the future if ever, if ever required.
Mick, do you know which type of air permit you guys are going for?
I know that there's already been a study there. So basically Bruce Tripp put together basically an exhaust, an exhaust model. And so I'd have to get the details of that for you, Michelle, but it's already a planned transmission.
So Michelle and Craig, Bruce Tripp, he put together the Title V air model and we review that with the New York State Department of Fire and Water Conservation for compliance with the Title V that we have.
Has that air permit been identified in your EAF, the need for that air permit?
Mick, do you know if that's?
I don't know offhand. No, I'd have to get that information.
Okay.
Hey Scott, I don't know about everybody else, but I couldn't hear you.
Scott's question was whether or not the air emissions would impact any other current air restrictions on the site.
No, part, part of that trip does, it looks at the property line and whereas the property line used to be 52 and 84, now the property line for the model and it's much stricter because it's the property line between Global Foundries and I Park.
So I understand that it's more confined
Is your allowed provision footprint, strong account is a subdivision?
I can't really understand, Michelle and Scott, what you're saying. It's coming in garbled.
Is the allow smaller because of the subdivision?
Makes the restrictions on the emissions much more stringent, much tighter. And we've had to go with a relatively larger unit for that air abatement system, the two air abatement systems that's going to go into that second story building that Mick referred to. And I think you heard Mick say there that the unit we picked, it had to be super efficient. It is 99.9% removal rate.
Yeah, I've, I've installed a lot of these units, you know, in, in Malta effectively, Global Foundries site. And I haven't come across anything with quite this one. We were very limited in the vendors that we could choose that could meet our performance criteria. So it's, it's a, it's a pretty, it's a pretty good piece of equipment and, you know, it's a high performance as Bob mentioned there.
Nick, what is the byproduct of the emission that does go through this unit treated?
So basically it'll be, it'll be, it's, the byproduct is actually, when it's abated, it's crystallized. So basically in the media, the media that it passes through, it, it gathers on the media and it's, it crystallizes. So it's a chemical reaction within the unit itself. So basically what you have is it takes all the contaminants out of the air as it passes through it and retains it in, in the, in the unit itself. And basically what you do is every, you know, I can't remember what the duration is, but depending on how much you're, you're scrubbing, you would change that media out as, as it becomes effectively clogged by the, by the, by the caustic. So you would, you would, you know, you change out the media pretty, pretty regularly depending on the, you know, the, the maintenance criteria for the unit itself and, and its use.
But what would be the byproduct if it wasn't treated? Like what flows through that?
It's, it's an acid abatement unit.
Okay.
So the primary one would, it would be nitric acid is the primary acid that's being utilized and being abated. And the other one being hydrochloric.
And is that, how is that monitored beyond door monitoring?
New York's performs periodic inspections that review the, the performance criteria there for the equipment. They have us perform a test, an air monitoring test under their purview to validate that the system is working properly.
Now are they reporting that information back to our township?
Not that I know of. I don't know that they report it back. I know that the information is public information and it can be sought out from the regulatory agency.
Are there any additional questions for Mick or Robert? Okay, then I'll turn back to Mick and Robert. Do you have any questions for the board?
No further questions from me. Thank you very much.
Okay. And I'll just say thank you for your time and for you going through the trouble of making these special arrangements for us as well as the other town developers there. So thank you very much and hopefully everybody stays healthy and well.
Thank you.
You too. Michelle, did we need to do any circulation or anything for this one?
All right. We may have to do a circulation. I have to understand better about the air quality. The air quality permit should be identified, but they need and exactly what is, what is going to be required. A Title V permit is a pretty regulated permitting process and it typically requires a lot of air quality studies before they can even get that showing exactly what the particulate matter will be that will be released into the air. So we will need that information.
Do, do we want to start that process now to make a motion for lead agency or do you want to hold off until you know better?
I think I'm going to defer to Michael on that one.
Have they submitted an EAF yet?
Yeah, I believe they submitted an EAF, but I don't think there was anything about the air quality yet.
So we won't even know exactly who to circulate to. So I think we'll have to wait a month.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's move forward to brumation and if you could let Michael Cunningham know that you'll be speaking on their behalf, he'll make you a panelist so you can speak.
Michael Gillespie was here, then he disappeared. He disappeared from both panels and attendees.
Kevin, he unmuted his line.
Hi Kevin, can you hear us?
Uh, yes, sure can. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, Mike, he wasn't around. I was just texting with him a little bit ago, so.
He came back now, so I'll try to promote him panelist again.
Beautiful, okay.
Came back and then tried to phone a panelist again and then he.
So while we're waiting, this is on for discussion, correct?
Correct.
Well, just, Michael Gillespie, can you hear us?
Are you with me? Are you with me?
Yeah, whenever I tried to promote you to panelist, you got kicked off. So I'll just promote, I'll just allow you to speak as an attendee.
All right, I, yeah, I listened to the, the whole one for an hour and then as soon as it kicked to me, it clicked me off. So anyway. Everybody's on. Kevin Brumation is with us.
Yes, Mike, yep.
Okay. So good night, good evening. I hope everybody's staying safe and all that, all that stuff. Tonight before you is actually an application which probably many of the planning board members have seen in the past, at least, you know, the initial phase on this. This is, this is Brumation. Kevin Weaver, who is actually online with us, is the owner. We prepared a site plan for him back in 2016. This is off of Donovan Drive on a, you know, about a 1.35 acre parcel. The initial building was a 5,600 square foot building that was constructed. In terms of the use, it's effectively, Kevin works, you know, with brew pubs and breweries and so forth, assembling, you know, what they need in order to brew. And Kevin can probably get into maybe a little more details if there's any questions. But when we, it originally went in, we had kind of indicated earlier on that at some point there would be an expansion. So we had looked at, you know, in terms of health department and some parking and drainage and looked a lot of those issues earlier on to, to assure that, you know, we weren't reinventing the wheel when we came in with, with phase two, which is effectively, you know, what this is. What's being proposed is a, basically 100% expansion. We have 5,600 square foot now. We're looking at another 5,600 square foot. The space will be, you know, limited to, again, assembly, storage space, things such as that. We did come in a few months ago relative to allowing some slight modification to the interior layout of the existing 5,600 square foot building. There was also some storage containers that were placed on site, which are proposed to be removed as part of this. But in terms of a physical modification of the site, other than the expansion of the building, we're not proposing additional parking. We, we took a look at earlier on what the parking needs for the facility would be. He's been good with those requirements, those needs. He, we, we did a calculation based upon what the expansion would require, basically another five employees. If you add up what's there and what's being proposed, we're still under at least what his need is relative to parking. The other, again, physical change is there's some drainage that wraps around the existing building, which we're going to have to extend and put a new cash base in and some piping. But again, other than the, the physical building expansion and relocation of the drainage facilities from a site plan standpoint, there's, there's not, you know, any other changes proposed. I know with the initial submit, we did provide some elevation drawings that were prepared by the architect record. Again, matching the existing facade of what was proposed. And while obviously this whole Corona epidemic wasn't anticipated in, 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 by anybody relative to this expansion, I think what Kevin's thought is, is to certainly move forward on obtaining the approvals relative to the expansion. And then, you know, you take a look at the state of business at, at such time and move forward as, as, you know, accordingly as you'd like relative to the actual bill. And I, Kevin, you can comment on the state of business, where things are at. Maybe, you know, interested in that. I know, again, with the initial build and so forth, it's been very successful. The board was great relative to the initial application that came in, moved through, you know, at a great pace. And, you know, it's one of these, it's one of these successful stories of, of somebody, you know, going, doing well with a, with a brand new business in town. So we're just looking to expand on that.
Yeah, absolutely, Mike. We're, you know, we, we plan to move forward. We were planning to move forward as soon as possible is the initial plan. Right now we have to wait and see. You know, business is, is doing fine. We have backlog and, you know, that's, we expected a downturn, of course. You know, but with the, you know, the triple P and all that kind of thing that's happening. We expect to pull through fine. So it'd just be the timing of when we feel comfortable to pull the trigger on contractors and such. But we want to use the time here to get the approvals and everything in place that you folks require us to do.
So there was a note, I think Pete had some drainage issues for the site. Have you guys seen those and do you have a comment on that?
I, I haven't seen any review comment letters. I mean, if they're available, that would obviously be great if they forwarded so we can take a look at. As part of this initial plan, we had to require, you know, we had to prepare a SWEP. The, the expansion was included as part of the thought down the road. So I think we may have to refile a notice of intent because we did close that out not knowing when phase two was coming. But, you know, procedurally that has to be done, but I don't, I don't see that being a problem. I mean, there's been a slight modification in the regulations since this was, phase one was originally approved. But I, you know, I don't particularly think that it's going to change, you know, the, the design of what we originally proposed. But, you know, I'll take a look at his comments. I don't have them.
Yeah, lost power.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry you didn't get that.
I guess just a question too. I mean, I think the only other agency that you can particularly deal with here, it's industrial planning, obviously the, the health department. And again, there were, there were some design elements considered earlier on on the initial septic design to accommodate what we're doing here now in the future. We can certainly go scratch on their door and make sure that, you know, they're agreeable to the expansion and employee count and all that. And then DEC relative to the stormwater, the speedies, but I don't know of any other, I don't think there was any other agencies particularly involved in this. So I don't know how the board, you know, feels about, you know, again, moving forward on this. It's kind of a strange time. I'm not sure procedurally how this may all work, but I don't necessarily know if it qualifies for a circulation. You know, we did not do that as part of the, the original project. And, you know, the next logical step that the board is comfortable with what's being proposed and I haven't seen Pete Zataro's comments, but if they're, they're not too off the wall. And I guess Scott, if you've seen it, if you can comment on that, I haven't seen them again. Next logical step would be, be a hearing, but that would be a little unique in the circumstance that we have.
Yeah, I remember that this was all discussed with the original, but was that filed? I can't remember what was actually filed. I mean.
In terms of what filed?
In other words, you know, I remember you noticed this and said, oh, by the way, this is just the first half and then there will be this at some, some future date. The plan is to double the size of the building. I remember that, but I wasn't, I, but I can't talk to whether any of that was filed with the, you know, with the thing as like, you know, the stated intent.
Well, the, the original site plan indicated a dashed outline that actually indicated the building for future expansion in terms of location.
I'm sorry, that was the question. Thank you, Mike.
So I think what, what we're, what we're asking is that your previous plans needs to be synchronized with, with the original so that we're, make sure everything is in order.
Okay, I mean, we can, we can do that. I think, you know, I, I think they're pretty synchronious as. Okay, I mean, we can, we can do that. I think, you know, I, I think they're pretty synchronious as, as it is unless, again, again, you're looking at a letter that, that I don't have to
Yeah.
purview to yet, so.
Hey, hey, Mike, it's Lori. Do you, um, I think you said there's sufficient parking, but do you have a parking calculation or something? Can you just walk us through that real quick? Because it seems like we're expanding the building, but we're not really expanding any parking, so we're probably losing a couple spaces, right?
Yeah, so, well, actually, we're not, we're not losing, but, uh, yeah, I'll walk through it. So we did a calculation based upon the interior layout and it required phase one, uh, required initially, oh, let's see here, 23 spots. That's what was required. Based upon actual need, we assumed that 12 would be sufficient, but based upon the layout of the parking and, and the access drive and truck maneuvers and so forth, we were showing a number of spots to be backed, okay? So we were actually going to build out 13 and then leave the rest banked. Four of those banks, parking spots were actually painted on the pavement. So they were, it was a paved area anyway.
It's already paved.
Yeah. Then there was spots 18 through 23, I guess on the right-hand side, if you're looking at the drawing, that were not supposed to be constructed and for, for whatever happened in the field, because the constructs were out there and doing their thing, that they were actually constructed as part of the initial phase. So we basically have 23 spots that were proposed and constructed as part of the original building. Again, knowing that 12 would probably be the right number that we need. The planning board, I believe, granted, we were.
Yeah, but Mike, you're saying that was what was required, but wasn't, wasn't there, wasn't it a higher requirement? But you just didn't need it because of the way this use was going to be staffed or something like, I thought there was a higher requirement for the square footage.
I have notes on the plan, which I'm just going through here. Again, we showed a total of, of 23, but we didn't need 23. We only needed 12.
Do you know what code, do you know what code requires? I guess that's what I'm asking. I, I don't see Michelle at her laptop, but maybe we can just double check with Michelle. Unless, Michael, you know, I, I don't know what the parking is for this use type.
Well, there was a combination of a number of things. It was office space, warehousing and storage, and then for an industrial and manufacturing use as well. So there were three different, three different types of uses and we kind of looked at the floor plan and came up with the number that was required, okay? Which again, was on the range of, I think, again, it was 23. I'm looking at the plan. We knew that we would only need about 12. 23 were installed as part of the original site plan. There are 23 spots out there.
Okay, so Michelle, I see, oh, sorry, go ahead, Mike.
As part of this expansion, okay, based upon the floor plan layout, it was determined, you know, floor plans are a little bit different. It was a total of 20, additional 21 spaces would be required. So total, 23 plus 21, right, is 44 spots. That's what the code requires relative to this site, okay?
Okay, that's what I was getting at. So, so we determined, even though the code required something, the planning board had the purview to reduce that requirement based on your use, right?
Correct.
Okay, so Michelle, I don't know if you heard my original question. Do, have we looked at this expansion and we confirmed what the new kind of extrapolated number of spaces would be?
So I started looking at the parking, but I didn't know the employment number and he just gave it to me this evening. So I know that there's five new employees. I do recall also that we had land banked some parking. And also that part of the problem, I believe, that was out there was that you had some storage containers that were covering some of the existing parking that was out there. And if I'm understanding the site plan correctly, those were removed. And anything that was in that sort of storage retainers would be put into the new addition.
Correct.
No, I think Mike just mentioned that even though they had land banked, they ended up building it and striping it. So there, it doesn't sound like there's more land banked. And I'm not saying I think we need more parking. I just wanted to understand how we were documenting that for this plan.
It's probably the total of the numbers.
Okay.
But if I remember correctly, one of the issues at the last time you were on the board was, um, there was some concern about parking and circulation around the site. And I think that was related to the storage containers, but I have to look at the numbers now that I have these employees.
Okay.
I haven't seen a memo from Michelle's office or her department. We provide for those parking calculations and actually on two places on the plan. And, and again, you know, this has now stood a little bit because it's been up since 2016. We're talking three years. It stood the test of time. Uh, you know, he doesn't have an issue with parking out there now. Things work. And again, with the anticipated increase in employees, uh, you know, if we needed parking, if, if I think Kevin can chime in. I mean, if we needed parking, we would provide parking. It's not an issue of not providing for it. I think, you know, I think there's something to be said if the building, for some reason, 20 years down the road gets sold and the use changes, and I think that would require coming back to the board anyway, or at least with the building department, then that's going to have to be reevaluated. Related to the use now, I think, I think we're okay, Kevin, right?
Yeah, absolutely. We're, um, you know, we're probably looking at about 17 employees that'll be on site after the expansion. You know, of course, there's always potential, but, uh, you know, we do have, uh, other employees that are outside. We, you know, we've put some of our sales force in strategic places in the country. So, um, you know, we have three, three folks that are outside of the office.
Kevin, are you planning, is it just going to be one, um, one floor right now and then you're planning to kind of up into the second floor later or are you doing it all at the same time?
The intention was to do, do the whole thing at once. You know, with the changing times, it could just be the one floor, but right now my intention is to do the whole thing. I really like all the space.
Okay, and so the employee number, you're saying the five employees would take into consideration operation of both floors? That's what you end up doing?
Can you say that one more time, a little echo?
The five new employees would take into consideration those floors? That's what you end up doing?
I didn't get that. Anybody get that?
No, I say it's echoing off of, Michelle, hold on one second. So Craig, I don't know if you're able to mute yourself, but you and, your mic and Michelle's mic are competing with each other.
I just muted.
Again, Michelle?
Michelle, sit now.
I think it's Scott and Michelle because Craig's muted.
Oh, I'm muted.
He only just muted.
And now I'm muted Craig and so Michelle can speak now. We can try that.
Craig, go ahead, listen.
Okay, so my question for you, Kevin, and what I just wanted to confirm was the number of employees, that your five new employees, is that considered both floors? Is that, is that assuming both floors are in operation or just one floor is in operation?
Uh, yeah, both floors. Actually, yeah, the upper, the upper floor is primarily storage anyway, so.
Okay.
Yeah, that includes everything.
Michelle, can you talk to Pete Sotero's letter? I mean, what, what was the issue? It was a drainage thing. I think it was the square in the back.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
All right, so I just ordered, like evidently this, this letter dated the 16th from CPL's office, even though it was addressed to Mr. Gillespie. It looks like it has another engineer's email address on it, so that's why Mr. Gillespie didn't get it. But I'll go, go over the highlights. Uh, first item is just to comment on the AAF, no big deal, I think, getting more detail on the sides of the building, drainage floor and sewer. Number two, AAF minor thing. Three, SWIP dated September 19th, 2016, and watershed maps don't appear to include the proposed addition in the calculations. Therefore, the SWIP will need to be updated along with erosion and sediment control plan. So according to CPL's review, I guess the addition is not included in the originals. So I don't know, Mike, have you reviewed that? Is that true or not true? Yeah, I, you know, we specifically went ahead and actually prepared this, knowing that this was coming, we didn't have to do it again. So I'll get that out, get, get the information to Pete and we'll get that cleared up. Again, we had to, in order to not do it twice, we, we included it as part of that original, but there seemed to be a kind of a miscue there. So I'll have a discussion with Pete, whoever's reviewing it. So you clarified that. On the floor, the proposed storm drain on the east side, the building is too close to the building. This will be difficult to install unless it's installed in the trench for the footing. However, any future maintenance of the pipe is very difficult. So basically, I guess the existing pipe, are you going to reroute that around the building? You plan it running through the building? What are you going to do with that existing drain? Yeah. Partially into the new footprint. Yeah, Michelle, if you, if you bring up sheet two, we provided two sheets as part of our submittal. And sheet two kind of details what we're doing with the storm drainage right now. The drainage comes from the south to the building, picks, gets picked up in a couple of catch basins in front of the building and then wraps around to the right or the east and then discharges to the pond in the rear. And I'll wait for that to come up. Is that sheet two? Yeah.
I believe so.
That's it. So what we're planning on doing is picking up, you know, this shows the entire building with the expansion to the right. We're planning on running, removing the existing discharge pipe, which is shown kind of faint in the middle of the building.
Yeah.
And then running that to the end, wrapping it around the building and then discharging back into the stormwater pond in the rear. Uh, I see the point Pete's making, that stormwater pipe is a little tight to the building. We have a little room to kick that out, you know, so, you know, right up against it. So I, I, you know, I think for all intents and purposes, you know, that's kind of a minor issue where we can, we can, we can accommodate that, yeah. Okay, and then the last item, five on this letter, will the expansion increase the number of employees? Question mark, information needs to be submitted to determine the existing water and sewage disposal system capacities and whether the health department approval is required. Yeah. And I mentioned, we'll have to work with the health department. Yeah, we'll, we'll make a runs, make a submittal up to the health department, just verify that they're okay with what we're proposing and all that good stuff. So again, it was accommodated for in the original. Is the SWIP, right, whether or not you got the building included in that, in your original SWIP or your pond size and calculation, right? Then two things I'd like to add, not quite sure, I missed it, but refuse enclosure. I don't believe it's shown on the plan. Okay. Anybody hear me?
Mike, yeah, we can hear you, Scott. Mike, are you unmuted again?
I'm, I'm here. I, I, I heard about the refuge enclosure. Yeah, if it was on the original plan, I assume it's generally in the spot that we're proposing it. Kevin, you have a full refuge enclosure out there?
No, but I believe we need to do that once we expand because we're going to be within the building, uh, distance. So we're going to have to enclose that.
Okay, so we'll, we'll get a, we'll get a, you know, a garbage enclosure on the print. And, and you got to figure out where. It may not be so easy. So you got to come up with a location. And right now he's got two dumpsters out there.
Yeah, that's right. We have, um, the regular refuges and, um, and also the recycling.
But those are accessed from the front load trucks, right? Those are the larger units that the front discharge trucks pick up and dump in, right?
That's correct, yep.
So you got to bear that in mind. You got to get that truck to pull straight up to those units.
Yes, yeah.
And then my only other comment, the prior screening, those evergreen trees to the, say, south.
South, yeah.
On the daycare side of the property. They're doing well from about halfway up, but halfway down, they're dead. So the board may want to think about having replaced those trees and I don't know what happened to them, but they're only providing less than half the screening that I guess they're intended to provide.
Yeah, I'm not sure. The pine trees just don't seem to do too good. Um, maybe some bushes can be placed in there, some low lying bushes to make up for it.
Michelle, maybe you take a look?
I can, I can definitely.
Yeah, the bottom half are dead for driving, so I don't know what caused that. It needs to be. Kevin, are they dead or is it, is it a deer issue?
No, it's, it's kind of strange. The bottom, the bottom branches seem to have died off, but the top seems to be doing really good. So, um, you know, my thought is that we can put some deer repellent bushes out there. I forget, have something in mind, but I can't remember the name right now. But, um, if we put a bunch of those down in there, that might just do the trick. I'd be, you know, more than happy to do that.
Okay.
Is there heavy water there where it's found? Because a lot of times water stress that does that.
Not particularly.
There's a couple of evergreen trees, I believe, at the daycare center and they're fine right next door. Might be a different species, but.
Yeah, it could be, yeah.
Hey, Mike, another question. I'm good with the parking and everything, but we did mention there was some, um, I think you had the trailer with some storage of, of parts and things like that. Do you anticipate with the expansion of the building that we need to set aside some sort of area on the plan if you need that type of storage again? Or do you expect that all to be within the new building, new part of the building?
I, I think the intent, um, right now those storage containers are on the site because they don't have accommodation for it on the interior. Once this expansion goes on, those will be removed and I've actually got a note indicated on the plan that in fact they have to.
Yeah, our, our intent would be to remove them and never bring them back. We'll, we'll have ample space.
Okay.
Okay, are there any additional questions from the board?
Uh, yeah, the path forward on this, will we have to circulate for this or is this?
No, we do not have to circulate. This is, this is really, I think, a type two action. It's just an addition and it's less than. Sorry. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, Michelle. You have a, an echo, but we can hear you.
Yeah.
I said, no, you do not have to circulate.
And we don't need any further hearings or any of that, right?
Well, I presume that we would need a, a public hearing, but I don't know.
It's up to the planning board whether or not they want to consider this a mine, a minor site plan amendment. And if they do, they technically leave the site plan, the public hearing.
So Michelle, we would consider it minor because when the original site plan was approved, this, this future addition was already outlined and included on that plan. Is that correct?
So I was just thinking, it was actually shown as a potential expansion area with the addition shown, yes.
And there's no additional requirements based on them doubling the size of the building, inside the buildings, which is fire protection and that other type of stuff?
Well, we'll have to meet New York State Building Code relative to the uses, you know.
Right, that would trigger, and those sorts of improvements wouldn't trigger any additional review under SECRE.
I'm sorry, Michael, could you say that again?
Sure, so additional fireproofing, things of that nature wouldn't trigger additional review under SECRE for this application.
Okay.
So the only thing remaining that's open is the SWIP, um, the sizing and the drainage. Verification of the SWIP, yeah, cool, you're right, okay, right.
So if that gets resolved in the interim, we could schedule this for a decision next meeting?
Yes.
I would agree, yes.
I, I do have a quickie, and not being too familiar with it. I know that there's not an architectural review board at this point. There's still an A, architectural advisory board. Is this, is this formally submitted to them through the planning board for a comment like the FAB? Do we have to make a presentation before them? How, how does it work at this stage in town?
So we will probably have to schedule. So we will probably have to schedule, have to call them up, try to get it sent to them, and we'll probably try to do it electronically. Michael, we had another one. We just sent them via email.
Okay. I, I caught.
We will have to schedule, get you on the schedule for the architectural review board and do this as a, another Zoom type meeting.
Okay.
But as I recall, I mean, the, the, the drawing was essentially a mirror of the other side. I mean, obviously there was displacement of doors and windows and stuff, but that basically it, it, it's identical in structure. It's not like you guys are changing the color or doing anything like that, right?
No. Yeah, everything's staying exactly the same. Same finish, same colors, everything.
I mean, not, I, I, again, I don't want to, but I'm not sure what the architectural review board is going to do is if the plan is to, to mirror image the other part of the building, and that was discussed at the get go.
Pretty much.
So. Yeah.
And you're keeping just one loading bay, right? From the, from the elevation drawings, I only saw one, one large oversized overhead door, is that right?
Yeah.
That's correct. We're, we're just going to keep the, the same one we have currently.
Okay.
So, I mean, Michelle, is it, you think that we still need to go to the ARB?
Yeah.
Well, I guess I'm wondering, can that not be accomplished before our next meeting so that we don't slow the process down?
Okay, so what I, you couldn't hear me before, but what I said is what we can do is we've spoken with the ARB about, about the circumstances. And I think what we can do is try to do sort of an email review from the ARB prior to the next meeting and just get their sign off on the building.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Okay, that works.
Kevin, congratulations.
Thank you.
On the business so far.
Well, we're trying to, trying to get the best through it.
Yeah, good luck with the continuing difficulty there.
Although I did see that alcohol consumption is way up.
Yes, it is.
It's, let's face it, guys, it's all we've got left.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So. Okay, thank you, Kevin.
I, I guess.
Thank you all for putting this together.
Yeah. I, I guess what we can do is we'll, we'll address Pete's letter, we'll, we'll get, get that kind of buttoned up a little bit. We can make it kind of a fresh, updated, you know, submission with, with a couple of those things that we talked about, moving the pipe and get the health department, get them rolling with a verification and presume that, you know, you know, listen, it's all about getting into the next meeting with less conditions, right? So that's what we'll work toward for the, for the upcoming May meeting. Right?
And Mike, just remember, the refuse enclosure and just let's make sure we have the parking calculation. Michelle said she wanted to look at the parking, so let's make sure we do that, too.
Yeah. Oh, that's fine. Yeah, it's, Michelle, if you have any questions, certainly, but yeah, that is on print, so.
As far as the parking goes, Michael, I just wanted to confirm the number of employees, the five number of employees that you had on the site plan was, was both, was both floors combined? That's all I needed to confirm tonight, and I did. So I'm, I'm confident because you, because of what you explained, that you have enough parking.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Kevin. And we look forward to having you on the May 19 meeting.
Sounds good. Have a good night.
Thank you all. Stay safe and all that. Okay? Thank you.
All right, take care. Before, our last applicant is I Park Visitor Center.
So now I'd ask anyone from I Park who's here to raise your hand. And I believe if you're calling, if you hit star 69, it should work.
Mike Buckley here, how are you?
I now see a new person called Owner.
Yeah, I heard, heard him very low.
Yep.
Good evening, everybody. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Lynn is going to be joining us. Lynn, are you with us?
There are a few other panelists who didn't resign, they called in. I can allow them to speak to see if they're here from I Park. Number 2527, are you here for I Park? Number 252, ending in 2527? And then there's number ending in 7737, are you here for I Park?
Yes.
There's Lynn.
Hi Lynn.
So it's 773.
Is that Mike McCormick?
No, I heard Lynn's voice.
Hello? This is Lynn Ward. Hi there.
Kimberly Ryan is here. From Lisk and McCourty and Doris.
Hello?
So do you have everyone you're expecting?
Yes, I believe we do.
Okay.
So, good evening, and thank you very much for this opportunity, and we much appreciate everybody making such an effort on our behalf. I'm Lynn Ward for I Park. The bulk of this presentation will be done by our architect, Kim Ryan. Very, very briefly, this seems like a new topic, but it's something that we have been considering for a number of years. In fact, when we first acquired this property, the supervisor, John Hickman, said to us, people in this area have a great deal of interest in agriculture and food production. Think about it. Well, two and a half years later, we have a new supervisor who basically isn't in the think about it mode, but in the do it mode. And so we're here with the actualization of that plan tonight. That is what we're trying to accomplish. I'm going to hand it over to Kim to detail it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
So I just want to say hello to everyone, hope everyone is well and their families are healthy. What we're proposing to do, as you can see on the bottom, Michelle has displayed what the building looks like currently. It's an old IBM building, and we're proposing to create a visitor's center and a food hub. So in that, we are proposing to add a 1,030 square foot addition, which is just an entry porch for a proposed brewery on the southwestern corner. On the rendering you see right now, is on that far left corner. It's just a small little porch entry. It's a current loading dock. That's just a minor complement to what we're proposing to do. If you look at the food hub itself, that's going to incorporate a 3,526 square foot visitor's center with a 2,197 square foot porch, including facade improvements and signage on the southeast corner for a number of various things that we, we intend to incorporate into the interior. So the interior alterations will be this brewery, mostly manufacturing, a bakery, manufacturing, and then the food hub, which would be some retail, takeout food services that will support the entire campus. We're also incorporating some minor facade improvements in order to make the buildings look more approachable. We're doing some site plan improvements to make them more pedestrian friendly, adding parking or reorganizing parking. And then there's a little small bit that we're adding to the Jane Bakes, building 339, also known as building 740. There's a, there's kind of a discrepancy, not discrepancy, but there's multiple building numbers. So that's just a small little 828 foot expansion we want to do there and facade improvements. If you look at the site plan, right now, Michelle, you have a R200. If you could put up the site plan, I would like to talk about that. I'm not seeing it yet. Is anyone seeing it?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. There we go. Okay. So I've color coded the different occupancies based on what our tendencies are going to be. So in the light blue in the lower left is going to be the proposed brewery. And the peachy pink color in the middle is our bakery, that's Spro Creek Bakery, not to be confused with Spro Creek Creamery. We are fitting them up with a much larger manufacturing area so that they can produce their cookies and cakes on a manufacturing level and then have a small little retail window in the food hub. In yellow, you see, that's our existing Jane Bakes. They're already in production, they're already functioning, they're already permitted. They have, in the future, a small expansion area, which is labeled future expansion. That's the 828 square feet. The green area is our food hub. That's where we're going to be putting out there our local farmer's markets and Ronnie Brook Farms and Spro Creek and what, whoever else that, and later on, Mike Buckley will talk about this, the business end. There's interior space and then there's exterior porch space where we will allow people to congregate and eat when our government allows. And then if you look in the lower right hand corner, which is pink, that's our visitor's center. And that's where we want to bring our guests in, learn about our agriculture markets, learn about the history of agri in New York State, and it's going to be kind of a museum-like visitor's center thing. And that's what we're adding on. We're adding on the visitor's center and we're adding on the porch and a small little expansion to Jane Bakes. So I know it looks like a big project, like we're adding on 7,000 square feet, which we are, but it supports services for an existing building that's there. I've run the, the parking calculation numbers in that top left hand corner, sent them so that Michelle could take a look at them. You know, we were very disciplined in making sure that we followed all of the requirements for what you're looking for, for parking requirements. We're also showing, it's hard to tell, but a little purple spot in the middle of the floor plan, we're adding public bathrooms that will service the food hub and the visitor's center. All of the other separate tendencies obviously have their own bathroom facilities, but this is one thing that came up in one of our last meetings. You know, within the building, we will be addressing building code wise, obviously everything that's required. Parking wise, I wanted you to see the calculations, what was existing. We, what I evaluated based on the proposed tendencies, we are well above what is required. We've required more parking spaces than are required and we've, we've provided more handicap parking spaces that are required. So I, we are taking into account the south, southeasterly parking areas around building 338 and 339, also known as building 730 and 740, into account for this particular location. Also, taking into account already the pre-approved gym fitness center. That's also in this parking calculation. If you want to go to the rendering, the AR, Michelle? I want everyone to see what we're proposing to change up what's existing and what's proposed.
It will be the R200?
I, I, yes, I sent that. If you all can see it currently on your screens, the, that's the A200. That's just the black and white line required by your requirement, but I would like the AR200.
It's just, it's just. Your latest is R200.
That, that's. Let's get that up. The rendering? Okay, so great. So the bottom two photographs depict the current conditions. It's a concrete panel building, steel structure. We have some corrugated metal siding, some lagers. And if you look at the top, what we're proposing, metal siding, curtain wall, silo, we're trying to make it more inviting, more off the street friendly. We want people to feel welcomed. We, we raised the first floor plane from the last rendering that we sent you. We wanted the guests, once they came into the front door, that they would be on the same floor plane as all of the tendencies. Because ownership and, you know, we feel like it's more welcoming if you're not taking people up another level. You don't want them to feel like they're, they're in a different type of environment. So through the site work and the, and the grading, we propose to bring people up into the level of the first floor, which is approximately 30 inches off of site. And we're, we're going to develop that with some really attractive landscaping and some pavers. Silo was added to try and incorporate Ronnie Brook Farms so that their concept feels welcoming. And we just want to make this feel like a really welcome place that our visitors, from wherever they come from, feel like this is a place that they're welcomed and they're going to learn something. And I want to turn things over to Mike to talk about the business end and talk about the business hours and how they feel like this is going to function within the community.
Can I just ask one question?
Sure.
Your proposition is to add, you're saying just 7,000 square feet to those existing structures, right?
Correct.
And does that include the actual overhang?
Yes. It includes the overhang, the porches, the visitor's center, the silo, the entry to the hopefully proposed brewery and the small addition to Jane Bakes.
Okay.
And Kim, what is the use? Is there a use in the silo or is that purely decorative?
The use in the silo on the ground floor will be part of the visitor's center. And then the remaining of it will be decorative.
So John, what we, what we anticipate in the visitor's center is, is we've kind of looked at some models from around the country, and interactive seems to be the way to go these days. So, you know, we're, we're imagining you kind of walk through that silo and you have some. some interactive stuff going on, you know, with different screens to help educate people on the, on the local farmers in the agriculture in the area. That's the, basically the theme of, you know, it's a welcome New York type of situation.
And this, I would just make the comment that I, I think this is, this is great because I'd always wondered how as with the food hub mission for the site, you were going to make that transition from, you know, that IBM architecture, which is so cold and so sterile and so industrial, to try to get into commercial where the public comes in and, and, you know, kind of interacts with the building. So my two cents.
This is Michelle, I have a question. How are you planning to sign, you know, do the signage for the site? Are you planning to add this to the existing monument sign or is there going to be separate signage?
Yeah, Michelle, so I think we need to have some additional signage in order to attract people to this, to this area, you know, kind of again, like a welcome of New York type of an area. So we're, we're going to prob, we're going to be working with the state on possibly getting some signs out on 84.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I'm assuming that you're going to be trying to attract travelers coming off of 84.
So do you, and then will you add additional signage at the site entrance as well? Is that what your thought is or do you just put them on the monument?
That is, well, we're twinging with two ideas right now, Michelle. Either changing the monument, going back to you folks with a change of the monument or creating, you know, distance, another sign, actually. The main thing we don't want to do is confuse people, right? So more than likely, we, we would rework those monument signs or the concept of that area where the monument signs are so that we have all having it be an inviting place.
Right, so you'd have probably some wayfinding signs included.
Yes, we really need to rework the signage. It's not good. People are getting lost on their way to Sloop Brewery and things like that.
Now, what about some of the other entrances that are now currently closed into the site? Would this then, would you look to try to reactivate some of those to get people here more directly or quicker?
So, so the intention right now, Richard, is part of the, the security project with Global, we actually are consolidating down the security of Global to separate that from the public. So Gate 5 is going to disappear altogether, the gates there, and they will be into the campus within the Global properties and then Gate 1 will remain open. So you're, so you're looking at Gate 1 and Gate 5. So Gate 5 is I Park Boulevard and then Gate 1 is, is over by John Jay, it's Route 52.
Yes.
And then eventually, I just think it would make sense to open Gate 2 as well.
Yeah.
Will this primarily be family-oriented or adult-oriented? I guess what I'm asking is anticipate like school groups coming in or mostly tourist-type?
Yeah, the intent is to have it opened on the, you know, to get out of, to get started, we're going to be open on the weekends only.
Okay.
We're anticipating, it's, it's more of a family-oriented type of situation because we have, we have ice cream, we'll, we'll do coffee, we're, we're trying to do two pop-up, tiny pop-ups with the CIA and then we'll have one small, you know, 1,600-square-foot restaurant in there. And then of course, so you could get your ice cream, you could go through, you take the kids through, you could, you know, you could do the interactive museum type of thing, learn about New York and then, you know, you go in, you get your ice cream, you get your coffee and then the, you know, we'll have a couple pop-ups in there and then if you wanted to sit and spend some time, you have the restaurant as well.
Yeah, that, that's why I wondered if you thought it would be potential for like school trips or something like that when we're back to doing those things.
School trips is interesting. That's something we would have to talk about as a group, but that's, that's an interesting thought.
Well, I mean, you're going to have a small museum, you, it's going to be, you said it's going to be hands-on and interactive. I mean, it might be, it might be a possibility. The reason I was thinking about that is with the parking layout, you may just want to have, make sure you have a space to accommodate buses.
Well, that we can certainly do there. That's a great idea. Plenty of room out in that parking lot.
Have you created a lighting plan as of yet?
So, so, so the parking lot does have lighting, existing lighting out there and it lays into the plan very well. And I think we should, we will do some lighting, uplighting onto the buildings, obviously, to give them a little bit of, a little bit of a showcase type of, type of quality as well. So we are still, that's a work in progress as far as lights on the building.
There is a lot of existing parking lot lighting that we will maintain, but as Mike discussed, we do plan to accent the building, the additions, so that it's enhanced and very visible and pleasing to the eye in the evening hours.
We need to make this thing exciting. It's very dead at the moment.
Yes.
Well, you've done a nice job. The exterior looks much different than the existing structure, so.
It is, it's a good-nosed job.
It's a challenge.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the, so the concept is, you know, the potential brewery and that's a manufacturing outfit, you know, kind of a standalone. And then, then the bakery, we're very excited about having Jimmy the Baker here, possibly, you know, filming some of his stuff for TV. He does the, the QVC shows and all that stuff, so that'll be a lot of fun for us. And of course, who doesn't like a, an ice cream parlor, right? We'll be manufacturing ice cream, but they'll also have a sales counter there, so you can look in and see how, how ice cream is actually made. And the bakery will create a window so that you can actually look in and see how the baking is happening as well.
And the rest of them will have YouTube, which is a kind of walkthrough show and tell.
Right, so the whole area is base, that's basically what it's set up for, is kind of an education center and a, and a destination for, you know, families to come and check things out.
So can we talk about our timeframe a little bit? We're very encouraged to get under construction and we understand that the governor has restrictions on construction, but we know that eventually they're going to be released. We would like to be approved and be under construction in July. And we would like to work with the board to hopefully find a way to make that happen. And anything you need from us, you know, just give us whatever you need from us to make that happen. But obviously, you know, we're just, we're trying to make it happen so that we can be open in the fall.
I'd like to actually be able to start the foundations in June and start to create the elevation changes out there. We have, we have a really unique parking lot that was, that was overpitched for years and years and it did us a huge favor to get to these elevation corrections that we have to make and I, we'd love to be able to get going on that in June if possible.
So, Michelle, what, what, what do you think are the steps towards that? I mean, not to put you on the spot or anything. Well, look, Michelle responded by the.
I'm sorry, I have to, you guys don't realize this, but I'm, I'm having to move my seat because they're filming my computer screen now because we, we lost a computer, the video screen, so that's why it's delaying me. I just have a question about the foundations that you want to start. Are those only the foundations for the new, it's only the new addition, correct?
Yeah, everything else is, is all set, Michelle.
Okay, so there's no other, and it's, so it's the new addition and then that little bump out off of Jane's Bakes, is that?
Correct.
Okay. And so you want to start both of those areas of foundation and you're thinking in June?
If we could, yes.
Um, so as far as, I think we can, go ahead, Lynn.
There's a particular reason we're trying to do this and it, it is the current circumstance because we're trying to keep the momentum that we've had at this property that we've temporarily lost. So that, that's what this objective is. And hopefully the government will see its way clear to it too, because without that we can't.
Right. So I think, again, I think we have to pass this by the AR, the Architectural Advisory Council, which I'm, you know, we've, we've implemented a sort of a COVID process where we are talking to them by email. So we'll get those over to them as soon as possible for any comments that they might have. And I guess, you know, the, yeah, we have to send around to the other intergovernmental, like the Fire Advisory Board and other departments. And then hopefully we could get you back on, you know, one of the next gen, one of the next agendas. Right now, I think the next one's May 19th, assuming that we can do another Zoom meeting on May 19th. And, and then hopefully we'd have the ARB comments by then and the Fire Advisory Board comments by then.
Michelle, could we ask to accelerate that process? Because if, if we're not shovel-in in June, it's going to, it's just going to destroy this thing.
But May 19th would, would get you in shovel-in in June, correct?
Right, but it, so, so if we could get a yes at that point, but as far as the review board, Architectural Review Board goes, when could we set something up with them for a question and answer?
We're, we're going to have to do it by email, Mike, because, because we've got a new process, so we'll try to get them to, to make any comments they have, we'll try to do that immediately. As I can get them the plans that you sent me today, you know, tomorrow I can forward them to them and then they can just get us comments because they're not actually meeting right now.
Oh, oh.
That's good, Michelle. Thank you.
Perfect, yep.
The other pieces that I know, I know that Lynn and I had discussed last time, we talked about the, the traffic study. And we sort of like to get an idea because we're going to be asked from DOT how much traffic you think this might generate, especially the visitor's center.
So we're, we're anticipating right now, as I say, we're going to be open on the weekends and we were kind of playing around with some numbers and we're thinking 100 to 200 visitors a day on the weekends. Now, the staff is going to vary as well. You know, if, if the brewery does go and the bakery is there, that's our full-time product, right? They're there all the time. So that's between the two of them, you have 10 to 12 employees. And then they'll be closed on the weekends, then you'll have the showpiece. So you're talking tops 20 employees probably in the area at a time, but right now, we're looking at probably just talking to other, other states that have done this stuff, 100 to 200 people per day on the weekends.
Okay, and then I know we talked about, Michael, hours, what were your thinking for hours?
Looking at 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM at this point. So it isn't influencing, we do have some small shifts that work in the manufacturing, you know, in the chip manufacturing on the weekends, but they are in at 7:00 and out at 3:30. So.
It's very small anyway.
It's not a huge, you know, it's not a huge population. On that side of house, it works out to about 16 people.
Okay, so, um, as I think you guys know, because I've, I've mentioned this before, we're, we had a request by DOT to provide information about vehicle trips in and out of the, the I Park site, but also the 52 corridor in general. So we have not had, been able to have the meeting that we had scheduled originally because, because of coronavirus. So I don't, we don't know what to expect that they may require from us. I think the trip generation is, is a good start. And yours, when you say 100 to 200 visitors, is that actually based off of some sort of ITE manual rate or how did you, how did you determine that? Is that just from anecdotal discussions with other folks or is that actually an IT rate?
Talking to folks in, in, you know, Pennsylvania, you know, over in Massachusetts and then up in Wisconsin, you know.
So it is anecdotal, but we have in fact given an assignment to AKRF to, to research these numbers for us and we'll have that in hand very shortly. We'll share that immediately.
That's perfect, because they're probably going to ask, they're probably going to want to see that, just, just because they're going to want. All right, perfect.
Michelle, I think we're, we're saying we're starting out as a, on the weekends only, but I, I would assume you want to, especially in summer months and things like that, you're probably going to want to be seven days a week or six days a week, right?
Right, this thing's going to evolve and we, we don't want to have a disaster first, so we'll try it. Sloop Brewery did the same, just came in with weekends until we got it down and then we can see if we can expand it into weekdays too.
And you have areas where you can expand parking?
Yes, absolutely. Yep, we have, we have good flat parking on Lot 6 and then we also have around, around the mountain at 335.
All right, so if you could give me those, the traffic stuff as soon as you can and then we'll, I'll get you, I'll speak with the ARB folks, I'll try to send them an email tomorrow about this with the, with the renderings. And they may come back and have some questions that I might have to speak with you about, but I'm not exactly sure what they're going to request at this point.
So Michelle, if they actually want physical samples of materials, we can provide that. Just let me know what they want and I don't know how we do those submittals in this time period with the COVID thing going on, but we can certainly do the best we can to give vivid imagery, which we do have via digital, or if they want physical samples, we can do that.
Michelle, do they typically do look at samples? We might be able to, I'll find out if, if he's going to want to see them and we do have a drop box, we could maybe have you guys drop them into and then we can just leave them for Paul.
No problem.
Yeah, quite, quite honestly, it's, it's really simple, straightforward stuff that they've probably seen a million times that we could actually, first shot, Michelle, what we'll do is we'll get you some pictures tomorrow, I thought we sent those over to you, I apologize, of the materials we're going to be using. And if those are acceptable to them, or again, if you want to set up a Zoom with them, I would be, be more than happy to, to walk everybody through the materials that we're going to be using.
I, I don't exactly, I'm not exactly sure of their ability with Zoom, but I can try to find that out and I'll get back to you.
Okay. Any other questions?
This is just, I, I don't know if it's exactly a question, but it would, I love the layout and the look of it, but it just seems like the dark brown is kind of quieting versus like lively. I don't know if you've looked at any other colors.
Actually, the contrasts are, so the brown would more than likely go to black on the, on the curtain wall and then the standing seam roof. And then we're softening more than likely with the posts with fallen lumber on site that we've been losing because of the storms and whatnot. And we're going to start trying to figure out some of the other materials like the stone, we have stone walls on site, we'd like to dismantle those and reuse them on the buildings. So these are things we're looking at. And then the, the silo, I get, you know, we could go back, back to the drawing board on that tomorrow and decide what to do with that, that color as well, so.
I just think, you know, maybe, maybe in a couple of places, it would just pop a little bit more if you had a livelier color on it. Maybe like an earth tone, but, but still like a color instead of the dark brown.
What about a veneer?
Or maybe that I Park logo with DeKalb on it.
That was a lot of debate about that.
I have no idea.
I agree on the color, by the way. This is what I call public works brown, so it has to be lightened up.
I don't know if New York State has any preferred colors or at the, I mean, there's, there's got to be something, you know, I don't know.
We'll take a look at it.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions for, for the team? Okay, well, thank you for your time. Thank you for the information you shared with us and Michelle will be in touch with you to help move this forward.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate your time and stay healthy.
It's my understanding that you're all, you're all happy with the project and really what it comes down to is the fire review and the architectural review.
And traffic.
And the DOT, right, right, okay.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
All right, thanks, everybody. Stay safe.
Let's drop.
Okay, that was our last. Okay, that was our last applicant for tonight. Do I have a motion to close the planning board meeting?
Go move.
Go move.
Okay, hey, thank you very much for, for your participation tonight. We definitely had some technical challenges, but we'll certainly overcome them. So take care, have a good evening and thanks again.